Tort claim. So I've been researching and looking it up. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous and I haven't eaten. I've been very anxious about this. But under Article 20 dash 303, it states, "The council by motion or resolution is hereby authorized to establish parking time limits or to prohibit parking." The council did do that. And it is my argument, which is Chapter 13. When I worked for the city, we redid then all the nuisance ordinances. I helped Melody personally rewrite all the nuisance ordinances, which included, you know, the whole city. Department heads, including the chief of police, was here to finalize the ordinances before we presented them to the council, which they passed. So under the article, which I'm told was the reason my truck was towed, it actually states that the council can change it, which they did change it. So I'm still under Article, or Chapter 13. Also in Article 20, um, 3 dash 367 for citations tags. It states, "Police officers are hereby authorized to give notice to persons violating provisions of this chapter by delivering citation tags to violators or in cases where vehicles without drivers are parked or stopped in violation with this chapter by affixing the tags to the vehicle by means of which the violation occurred." Okay, "The citations, among other things, shall undertake briefly the charge, shall bear the registration number of the vehicle, and shall direct the violator to present the tag at the police station or other designated place within five days or another reasonable time." None of that was given to me. So even under the article that they, that the city claims they towed my truck under, they still didn't do it properly. They did not give me warning. They did not tell me what was wrong. All I got was a red sticker that said, "Abandon." Abandon means, or abandon ordinance. And the impound lot will only keep my car for 30 days before they sell it off. The 30 days are almost up. This is my last plea. This is the only thing I have left under our ordinances that I can do is come to you guys for help.
Thank you, Alicia. We will take everything under advisement and go from there. All right?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I have all the evidence I can get.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my printer ink ran out. I have partial copies of everything for everybody.
You hang on to that. Thank you. The rate and fee guys not here?
Oh, I am.
Okay, item number two, discussion-
Oh, the rate and fee, yeah.
Regarding rate and fee advisory committee. I thought that was a goddamn sticker.
Couple of weeks ago, what you're looking at is a packet that was provided to the rate and fee advisory committee on May 30th. And so what we want to do with that committee is show them some various items within rates and fees that the staff was looking at potentially placing in the budget for October 1 fiscal year. So we started with the rate and fee advisory committee. And then what they do is they'll meet back in August and make a decision. They didn't make any decisions at this meeting. It was all discussion items. And then with you guys, what we'll do is through the budget process is start, you know, plugging in some of these numbers, et cetera. So I won't read it to you, but for example, we had animal fees as the first item that we discussed. And really, we feel that our fees are in line. The one thing that we'll ask y'all to change on the fee schedule is that we no longer do cremations. And so we'll just take that off and we put that to the private sector to do, to provide that type of service for animals. So we don't, we would just take it, take the disposal rate off, et cetera, for the fees. So not a, not a big one. The next item is ambulance fees. And this gets really detailed. You'll start seeing levels of drugs, et cetera. And what Eric went through was took a look at a bunch of other cities and compared. And he later, sorry, it got a little confusing, but at the very end, he added later, what Kingfisher does, what Life Net does, what Cushing does, what Noble does, what Ski to- Thank you. New to Oklahoma. I'm not even going to try the next word. It starts with a Q and has a lot of consonants. Thank you. What is that? Quapa, okay. And then, in, out of Oklahoma City, what we, what we were looking at is, are we charging a rate that's comparable? And we just tried to take a look at various cities. So he's identified in his spreadsheet what rates he would want to change. So he has what's allowable through Medicare. We always check insurance and see what's payable. And then what his proposed rates are for those various drugs and services. What, they, everybody does it so differently. Like how much you charge for mileage, et cetera. And I want to reiterate that rates and fees are above and beyond the regular call of service. In other words, you have a choice if you break your toe, whether or not your spouse or loved one or someone drives you to the hospital or do you want to pay these rates and see if your insurance will cover it. So it's, when I talk about rates and fees, we're addressing items that are above and beyond kind of the normal call of duty for a city. So that was another one. And we'll go into more detail with you at a later date during budget. But I just wanted to share with y'all what we share with the rate and fee group. So that's ambulance fees. Water tap fees, um, the, kind of the issue on water tap fees, I'll just use a one-inch meter and setter. We currently charge $500. So you buy a new home, they put in this, this meter and we, we put in this meter and we set it and we do the work for it. What's interesting on setting a meter, though, is that we then own that, we own that meter and we take care of it forever. So that we would like to at least break even on our cost because right now, we, we don't break even on our cost. And so not only is it just the installation, we're not asking for the next 20 years of maintenance on it or for some of these houses, like my house, the next hundred and something years of maintenance. We're just looking at, at costs. So what, what Maxine did was went and took what the present charge is at $500 on a one-inch, what's our actual cost? And she breaks down materials and labor and comes up to a number of $722. Typically, that cost is passed from the builder to the, to the owner and the cost of that home. We build, minus what you'll see later for a development, on average, less than 10 homes a year. So this is not a mass quantity. But it would at least cover our cost rather than us paying for, for new meters. And then how, same with the short services, long services, et cetera. So not talking water rates, talking the actual meter and installation. Maxine, any comments on that?
No.
Ironic. We briefly, um, police fees. One thing that they were looking at is, there's like a cover letter, if you see that, the impoundment of a motor vehicle. Basically, Damon came in and talked about, you know, the only time that we would impound, now the state allows impoundments on driving without insurance, et cetera. Right now, what happens is that the individual goes to impoundment and can just show a proof of something, but never shows that they cleared that ticket or have the correct insurance. They just show proof of ownership. They get their vehicle and they're back on the street doing the exact same thing without insurance. So what most cities are going to is a way, like City Moore did this in 2008 and many other cities, that it allows the, it's not just for the fee. It's not necessarily the money that we're looking at. It's that we want, we want to be able to know that drivers are safe back on the road when they get their vehicle. The next conversation was very, very brief. Y'all have already seen this document. It's a breakdown of hotel tax and what it would look like if you raised hotel tax a percentage. There's a chart, so you can see like it. In FY12, we revenueed, what was it? $152,000 total. At $152,000, at 4%, you know, we show how it breaks down. Well, if you did a 1% increase, if you had the same amount of occupancy in hotels, that would be 190,000 revenues. If you did 6%, it'd be 228, et cetera. And then this chart was basically what I received from Mary Coffin about kind of a proposed way to break it down. But really, all I'm showing is what the, what, you know, we talk a lot about percentages and we forgot, we forget to tie dollars to them. So I wanted to show y'all in dollars. I did go through this, some of this state and look at what other hotel taxes were in the state. All of that's available on state website to find hotel tax. So you can kind of see who else is at four and above. And, you know, we did notice that some of our comparison cities that we use, they don't have a hotel. Like I think Mustang, we called them. They don't have a hotel. So they're looking at establishing the hotel tax rate right now for the first time to, to have a hotel. So this was really informational. I'm not asking the rate and fee advisory actually to vote on this later. It was to give them information. I think there's a lot of bad information floating around with hotel tax. So this was just a way for us to do some education. And I did remind them that city council has not come back to me and asked for hotel tax to go back on an agenda. It was, it was merely a workshop item. So I haven't heard that from you guys yet. Um, monthly sales tax, we talked about in that group. I will tell you, our sales tax came in this month. I haven't updated that for you. We check sales tax on the 10th of every month. Wanda and I watch that like it's our pulse. So on sales tax, I'll tell you right now, we budgeted 3.8 million for sales tax. We're tracking right now. We're making bets on my dry race board. If you would like to enter the betting pool, I believe we're going to hit, and I will say it publicly, 4.42 million is what I think we're going to end at. I've done a calculator with an escalator. I think 4.42. Wanda is much more conservative than I. And so she's a little bit lower. If you'd like to join our betting board, it's, it's in there. We anticipate to be above, above the budget on that revenue. And one thing we'll talk about in our retreat is what do you do with that money? Right now, because y'all established a stabilization fund, otherwise known as a rainy day fund, what, what we've done, instead of spending that money, is we're really swirling in a way to put in a stabilization fund. So we haven't gone and spent that money. As we watch it, overall, year-to-date, we're 8% over what we were last year at the same time, which is tracking exactly with the state average. State average is 8% right now. So what we do in, in these times preparing for the budget is we attempt to take a gander and guess at next year's revenues, which once again, I'm, I'm hoping for over 4 million. Wanda is still teetering around 3.9999. So we'll get there. I'm trying to get her above 4 million. She has complete panic attacks about it. But I do believe the state and the city are in a good place for next year for sales tax. If you look, the chart shows a four-year trend. I'm sorry, it's not in color. And I do upload it on Dropbox, so I'll keep y'all updated. If you ever have questions, we check it on the 10th of every month and send it over to the chamber as well. So that's just a conversation about sales tax. I do believe it's a conversation the next year about what we could do with another cent or half cent or whatever it is with sales tax. We have the capacity to do so. So in your, in your packet, I've compared some other cities to sales tax and how they distribute that sales tax. So for example, the Logan County, the city takes in 3%. So every commodity that you buy, we take in 3% straight revenue. Logan County rate is 1%. Point 25 of that is dedicated to fire. And then that falls off or can be renewed in September of 2015. The other 75% of that one cent is dedicated to jail operations and it's subject to removal or fall off or reapproval in March of 2015. What that means for us is it allows an opportunity for us to discuss how we want to possibly use that, change it, et cetera. So really, just a, a way to show, show y'all. Then about every month, I check sales tax with the state and see if anybody's made changes. I do not have this memorized, but I do. If you want to see anyone's sales tax within city, county of Oklahoma, it's on the Oklahoma Tax Commission website. And you can kind of compare us to other places and see what sales tax is like. Next was, uh, well, walking charge. Did we end up discussing Maxine, walking charges? Maxine, why don't you tell me about Waste Connections walking char- never mind, I will. Basically, we're char- we charge, we charge $55 for a walking fee, but Waste Connections charges us more than that. So it's just, once again, these things that we find that we're helping subsidize and pay for. So we'd like to just cover our cost. Another one is that the town of Cedar Valley, we currently charge $15.86 for their solid waste renewal. Unfortunately, Waste Connections charges us $17.15. The city of Guthrie bears the burden to pay for each of those trash cans in Cedar Valley with them not paying for it. To me, in an enterprise fund, you pay for what you use. And so what's unfortunate is the rest of the city of Guthrie is subsidizing their trash service. I will be asking for y'all to, to make that right at least by October. Fair, good, because I have Waste Connections. Okay. Next is permit fees. We have not changed permit fees since 2007. And really, what we do, once again, we take a look at other cities. And this is all over the place on building permits. I mean, you can see that Glenpool, for example, they, they charge in their building permit a parks and recreation fee. So they find a way to subsidize their parks and rec through building fees. And there's, there's a lot of ways to skin that cat. And so there's different ways to do it. So Ms., Ms. Renee wanted also to make it a little bit easier. Our building permit spreadsheet, if I was a builder and came in, I mean, you might as well be doing quadratic equation formula trying to figure out how much it costs.
That sounds good, yeah.
Am I right? You've done this recently?
Yes.
Okay. So we're trying to make it, a lot of cities do it like 10 cents on the square foot. I mean, you know, let's, let's not try to go and count how many toilets and count how many da-da-da and just make it, we want to make this as easy for our builders and be a development-friendly community. And, and that's what we're looking at. So it's not just, it's not necessarily we're looking at raising rates. We're also making, making it easier and covering our cost and being, being comparable. I'm sorry, we have EMS at the end. So those are the items that we discussed. Another item that has come up about rate and fees is internment burial plots. We charge $300 a plot, 400, excuse me, 400 for non-residents or everybody. 400 total. People are dying to get in there. I've been waiting all day to say that. And so I, it might be something that we want to look at. I mean, comparatively, other places, burial plots, like $1,000 or something. Do you like that? $1,000 is a normal plot price. So we might want to take a look at it. I will say, I also pitched the idea that city employees, I think about the guys that- They're dying to get in there, I tell you. Like the guys that, I think about the guys that work at the cemetery and gals out there that, you know, they work on that place unbelievably well. I mean, if you, if you have not gone to that cemetery lately, it is amazing. I know Mayor helped me put out flags the other day. And that's a lot of work. That's a lot of work. And anyways, a lot of, a lot of public cemeteries, they use weed killer around the headstones. And it looks terrible. We weedie every single one of those. And there's what, 20,000?
A bomb.
20,000 headstones. And they double the population of the city. They don't vote, except we're on every other, yes, every other election.
In Chicago, those people vote.
So it might be a conversation that we might throw in there is internments.
You know, I've read how a manager shows their commitment to this town is they-
My plot. I bought a house, now you want me to buy a burial plot. I love it.
You haven't done it yet?
No, no, I haven't. I haven't, it's terrible. And then y'all are going to name the wastewater plant after it, man. Thanks. Thanks for the sewer plant. So that's just, you all feel free to come to me. I think this is about the only rates and fees. And on Friday, y'all are going to have a conversation with our financial advisor. And, and rates and fees aren't going to save any financial crisis. This is not where your revenues are. This is really just to make it an equal playing field for staff to be able to provide services. And the way I talk about is just equality amongst our residents that someone else isn't paying the burden of someone else. And trying to make it equitable is what we attempt to do and make it fair and good pricing. So that's all I have for rate and fee. Y'all have any questions on, on any of those? If you ask me about certain drugs on the spreadsheet for EMS, I can't answer them like that. No idea.
We only want generics.
Generics.
Well, after that. All right. No questions, no comments? That's it? Sure.
Well, our auditor is here, was here in the building, but thought that he was presenting at the city council meeting at 7:00. So we can take the time. He's not going to take a lot of time.
I told him 10 minutes off the head.
Yeah. And I did send you the three documents in your email, the management letter, the audit. They are also located in your Dropbox under something like budget, something like that. And so they're there. Once again, I, I do have to tell you, when I came to the city and I noticed that our audit letters only have like three, three items listed that we need to do better. I came from cities that have like 25 things to do better. And I have to say, that's from the amazing work of Wanda and her team and their ability to cross Ts, dot Is. And they, they carry a very, very healthy, good audit. It is, it's absolutely amazing. So he does, I was waiting for all the punches and seeing what happened. And they, they run a really tight, clean ship in finance. And so it's reflected in the audit. So I'm happy to, to share that. Usually, I would hide during the audit review. So thanks to Wanda and her team for, for doing everything right.
So a little worry about that, city council?
Yes, sir.
Number four, are we having any discussion regarding any of the agenda items that are on there? Anybody in council having questions? A through C on the Public Works? And then A through K on the city council?
On the July 2nd meeting, team, we're fully prepared to have that meeting for July 2nd. If we knew that everyone was going to be out of town and it wasn't going to have quorum, then we would ask you to cancel it so that we wouldn't waste time preparing. If you plan to be in town July 2nd, have it. We're, we're happy to have it. That's definitely not the issue. We're not trying to get out of a meeting.
About work-wise, is it, is it something that's just, it's not a big deal for the skits? We could do-
I mean, there was- One thing came up. No, no. Everything can move.
If everybody's going to be here, I think I'd prefer to have it.
I'll be here.
Okay.
One day.
You'll be gone? Will you be here?
I think so.
You'll be here, Jeff?
So number, item number four on both the Public Works Authority and the city council, I'm going to recommend when we get up there, we just do, that we have the meeting.
Sure. Or you can just take no action?
Or just take no action?
Sure.
Right.
You don't need to- Rainbow, they can just do a no action, maybe number two?
No action.
Sure. All right.
Same thing here. Okay. Request for future items of discussion?
There was a request a few weeks ago for recycling. We have met with the recycling with Waste Connections to have them come back and pitch a program again. So they're just, we had asked them, we just said in July, so either the second, we didn't know yet about the second meeting. So they'll either come second or 18th. Really?
14 days.
Wow, I can add. Yes. Yes, I stand corrected. The, the third Tuesday in July, he'll come and do that. So just let y'all know, we were, we didn't just miss it today. Rain man over here.
Anything else? This special city council meeting is adjourned.
You should have three documents. And if you don't have them, that's fine. But hopefully, you've got them to look at. There's the, the big one, and yours should be bound, but it's the actual financial statements. And let me back up and tell you who we are exactly and who we're not. That you all, we're, we're the audit team firm. There's another CPA firm, Crawford and Associates, that helps the city. And they've been involved even way before us even. And, but their role now is to help, they may help on a number of matters throughout the year. But specifically, as it relates to the audit, they'll help get everything cleaned up. If it needs to be cleaned up, reconcile the accounts, get work papers in a manner that we like to see them. They actually write the report. And then they forward that to us. And then we review it and it goes back and forth. So again, it's a separate CPA firm. There's no contract, there's no relationship anything between the two of us. We do have, or have a similar, we do this on a number of municipalities. I'd say 20 to 25. And the majority of those, the Crawfords are involved with. So it's, it's a good relationship. We know them well. But again, it's, they're totally separate from us. So I really hadn't prepared to go much over this document. Certainly, I can't, if y'all had seen something we need to go over. One thing I will mention, you all have passed, I don't know what you call it, but essentially like a new rainy day type calculation. And that will take effect in the current year. So that hasn't been presented. It's not even mentioned in here. So that'll- Yeah, and so everyone's got to figure out how to, how to calculate it. But other than that, the audit opinion, But other than that, the audit opinion, the audit opinion that's in here, which is what we present to the financials or our opinion on them, it's the standard opinion, it's what the state wants to see, you know, any bondholders, anybody, it's the standard report. So that's, that's what you wanted, so nothing to go over there as far as that's concerned. The other two documents are documents that we actually prepare. The Crawfords don't have anything to do with these. The, the first one I'll mention, it's a single audit report, and again, y'alls will probably be bound, but if you receive or actually if you expend over $500,000 in any year of federal funding, then you are required to get one of these. And so you got over $500,000 because you got one. And so what's, there's actually two reports in here. One report is specifically related to your federal programs, and it deals with compliance and your controls over those federal programs. And so if there are any issues with those federal programs, then those issues would be in this document. There aren't any issues with them. But there's a report in there that you got to have anyway, but there's no issues with them. There's another report that's in here that deals with the city as a whole, and you would get this report whether or not you had $500,000 of expenditures or not. This, the second report's actually required by the state, among others, but, but we just put it all together in one document. But that report also deals on controls and compliance, but it's not specifically related to your federal programs. It could be, the city as a whole, okay, whether it's federal programs or not. And so you've actually got a couple of comments that we've put in here related to that. And the city's response is in here. And the, the, one of them is the payroll, to making sure that you all have a requirement that when, you know, time cards, your time sheets, whatever you use or turn in, that those be signed off and approved. And we're noticing instances where that doesn't happen. And unfortunately, it's not just you all that does it, that doesn't make it any better, but it's, it's somewhat of a common occurrence. And so really, the thing there is just, you got to enforce it. I mean, that's kind of what it comes down to. So there's that. And then the other comment that's in here, and this is in here, and I don't mean to make light of it, but I think it's been, it's certainly been corrected. The state has a requirement that you cannot have a fund balance below zero. It can't be negative. And so you all had a fund that was below zero, and it simply, it gets reimbursed, and it got reimbursed the following month. And so the negativity, if you will, has been removed. And really, in fact, I mentioned to Wanda, there's probably some accounting issues that could be made to keep that from happening anyway. And just, this, and I meant to say, this report has actually been done, I don't know, a couple of months maybe? I'm not sure, but it's, it's been a little while, and it's just been timing to get with you folks. So, but at the time, we were in a hurry to get this done, and then for whatever reason, it, it didn't happen, and the timing got off. But so in any event, those are the two findings that are in there. Now the, is there anything on that before I move off of that to the, to the last document here? Oh, I'm sorry, there's, there's one other issue here that I need to go over. I forgot. The utility receivables. And Wanda and I have talked about this, and, but it's, you all, you know, bill your, your customers every month, and they get a bill, and when that's invoice is sent, essentially a receivable is created. That customer owes you money, the city keeps up with that. And at any point in time, you've got invoices that have been sent out that haven't been paid. But those unpaid receivables have to be tracked, they have to be recorded, they have to be reconciled. It's almost just like a cashier, you know, a bank account. You have to reconcile your bank account every month back to your books. We need to make sure that these receivables are getting reconciled back to the books. So you've got this list of customers that owe you money, you've got your books over here, your books need to equal the total of this list. And what had happened, an entry had gotten made a year or two ago, and that relationship wasn't happening. And that's how, I mean, it didn't reconcile, and we figured it out, so that's been corrected. But obviously, that led us to notice that, well, that reconciliation hadn't been taking place. So, you know, we, I think we suggested every month, and Wanda's saying quarterly, so, you know, whatever, just that it gets done at some, some idle frequency. Okay, those things. And then the last thing is a letter of audit communication. This is something that us, we as auditor, others, to present to the governing body, it's not the state, it's not the federal government, it's just our auditing professions. And there's six or seven bullet points that are in here that if you'd ever thought about it, you'd probably think, oh, those are probably some good things for you all to know if there was anything going on. I'll tell you, there's nothing going on under those six or seven bullet points. Certainly, if you're a bigger, more complex entity, you probably have some things there, but certainly here, you don't. But also, that's in here, is another comment that we had. And if, if I can take them, there's, there's three levels, if you will, maybe of severity of a comment. The worst is a material weakness. The next level is a significant deficiency. That's what was in the single audit report, you know, the receivables and the other two things. This is the lowest bucket. Okay, this is just like, hey, this is a good idea, you guys might want to think about it. You know, we noticed some other people were doing this, and it's kind of a best practice type thing. But it's, banks have been offering this now for, I don't, probably maybe going on seven, eight years, 10 years as well. It, it used to be cutting edge, but now it's, any decent-sized bank will offer this, and it's, the trade term is positive pay, and it's simply a matter where a banking customer will submit their check register to the bank. Whenever you write checks, you know, you write 50 checks at a time or however many, you submit a list of those checks electronically to your bank. That bank then takes that list, and as those checks come in for payment, they will compare the checks back to that list. And so if the amount's different, and I think now they've even gotten to it where if something on the check is different than what you wrote, the bank will flip it back to the, to you and say, hey, we noticed this is a difference, what do you want us to do? Do you want us to pay it? Do you want to stop it? What do you want? And the banks are actually pushing it because it stops check fraud that they didn't have to be responsible for sometimes as well.[1684.20]